Bueno, tal vez estén diciendo que no estoy usando la pulpa de la iglesia esta noche, sino que estoy usando mi propia pulpa esta noche porque tiene que ver con lo que vamos a hablar. No sé cuántos de ustedes han visto mi pulpa. Es una pulpa muy artística, Chris. Soy el único que la tiene en el país. Y esto no es para chupar sus zapatos. Pero como saben, Rabi Zakaria dijo que la cruz es el amor de Dios crucificado por nuestro pecado. Como un recordatorio para nosotros de que Dios el Padre es un buen padre. Es un padre amoroso. Es un padre increíble y es el Señor Jesús para tomar nuestro lugar en la cruz. Así que esta noche voy a estar hablando desde esta pulpa durante los siguientes minutos. Y mi amigo Jim Woodmer me hizo un pequeño paquete con el word "regrets". Y vamos a hacer un poco de ejercicio al final del día de la reunión de la iglesia esta noche. Vamos a derramar todos nuestros reguetes en este paquete en la cruz. Vamos a rezar por esos reguetes. Y vamos a vivir aquí hoy de nuevo. Vamos a vivir en la luz. Amén. Mi buen amigo que acabo de conocer la semana pasada, Chris, él sabe cómo tatuar también. Y tatúa con este pequeño muro. Y me hizo como un regalo, mi pequeño regalo dice 100. Así que voy a ponerlo justo aquí. Así que ahora tengo mis dos pequeños muros aquí. Mi pulpa, mi pulpa de la cruz, y mi pequeño... Y luego, por supuesto, tengo mi pequeño gorro que mi amigo Ben me dio para mantenerlo 100. Amén. ¡Aleluya! Bueno, estoy muy feliz con esta reunión esta noche. Y sé que mencioné a ustedes la semana pasada... La semana pasada, perdón, la noche pasada, la semana pasada. Mis días pasan tan rápido. Ni siquiera sé cuándo es noche o cuando es mañana más. ¿Entiendes lo que digo? Sé que te dije la semana pasada sobre nuestra comunión hoy, pero no tendremos tiempo para eso. Así que lo que estoy planeando es que el 25º, cuando vuelva a la pulpa la semana que viene y esté en Maná, vamos a hacer comunión juntos y lo hago de una manera muy especial. Nunca arrastramos la comunión. Vamos a hacer comunión bíblicamente. Amén. Así que no hay comunión esta noche, pero quiero invitar a todos nuevamente esta noche porque este es un evento muy especial, RTO. Este es nuestro primer momento radical, o RTO Town Hall, reunión para pretender... pretender menos. Honestidad, discusión familiar sobre cómo cada uno de nosotros vivirá como cristianos. Una vida sin reguetas con mucho respeto, con mucho respeto por el Hallelujah del nombre de nuestro Padre Santo, no solo en 2018, sino más allá. ¡Aleluya! Así que esta noche estamos tomando un momento radical como resultado de mi mensaje del jueves pasado para tener esta crítica, útil, edificante y importante discusión. Hola, Joe Mahari. Con la ayuda de seis amigos maravillosos RTO que estaban sirviendo en un panel, más sobre ellos más tarde, para interactuar juntos y llegar con pasos bíblicos prácticos y útiles hacia lograr una vida libre de reguetas y más allá. Porque, porque, déjame decirte por qué. Estoy después de una cosa, solo estoy después de una cosa. Estoy después de la revivencia. Estoy después de la revivencia. ¿Ves? Si no, entonces la revivencia bíblica es un peligro. ¿Ves? La revivencia bíblica no es una opción. No es una opción. Pero en cambio, es la voluntad de Dios. Entonces debemos convertirnos en un conducente, convertirnos en conducentes de la revivencia al convertirnos en el vaso de misericordia de nuestro Padre al vaciarnos de nosotros mismos y llenarnos de nuevos nosotros con Cristo con el Espíritu de Dios a través de la tristeza de Dios. La tristeza de Dios, Cátolica. Vivir en la salud y sana tensión bíblica de la verdad y la gracia. Por lo tanto, por favor escuchen muy cuidadosamente ahora. No podemos seguir ignorando a 17 miembros de Dios que murieron. No podemos seguir ignorando y, por lo tanto, rechazando a miles de personas profundamente heridas y heridas en la Iglesia, en América, que están llenos de reguetas negras, algunas de ellas causadas por nosotros, la Iglesia. Por lo tanto, debemos levantarnos y estar preparados y ir duro después de nuestros hermanos y hermanas para gozar de ellos radicalmente rezando radicalmente a nuestro buen Padre para ellos con profunda humildad, con profunda humildad y profunda angustia para que puedan ser curados. Planeo que en 2018 cada uno de nosotros vea nuestras esperanzas en Cristo convertirse en realidad, mientras que nos volvamos mucho más agresivos, sin parar y firme comprometidos con hacer la voluntad de nuestro Padre mientras nuestro buen Padre nos sorprende más a menudo para que no nos hagan caza por culpa ni por la pregunta "¿Qué si?" Queremos ver una experiencia de la esperanza radical de Dios, nuestro Padre, se volvería vivo en nosotros mientras comprometemos con tomar su prescripción precisa en 2018 y más allá para vivir una vida libre de reguetas en Cristo Jesús. Aquí está un texto bíblico de el jueves pasado, el libro de Éxodo 15, 15:22-27. ¿No es maravilloso que el nombre del libro lo démosle, Éxodo? El exit que hemos estado buscando. Aquí está. "Moses llevó a Israel del Mar Rojo. Entonces salieron a la selva del mar y fueron tres días en la selva y no encontraron agua. Ahora cuando llegaron a Mara, no pudieron beber las aguas de Mara porque estaban enfermos. Por lo tanto, el nombre de la aguas se llamaba Mara. Y el pueblo se quejó contra Moisés diciendo: ¿Qué deberíamos beber, Moisés? Así que Moisés lloró. Elevo radicalmente al Señor y el Señor le mostró un árbol. Entonces Moisés lo echó en las aguas y las aguas se hicieron dulces. Allí él hizo una estatua y un ordenador para ellos. Y allí Yahweh los testó y dijo: Si cuidadosamente escucha la voz del Señor, tienes que hacer lo correcto en su lado. Eso se llama coraje. Dále el oído a sus mandamientos y mantente todas sus estatuas. Y no pondré ninguna de las enfermedades sobre ustedes que han traído a los egipcios." Y él dice: "Porque yo soy el Señor que cura su presencia." "Ahora..." "Entonces llegaron a Ilam donde había doce aguas y 17 árboles de pámpeles. Así que venían allí debido a la abundancia supera la agua." Debemos reconocer inmediatamente en este texto la mano clara de Dios en el testamento. Deben reconocer la mano de Dios en el testamento de su pueblo y también debemos afirmar su salvación. No se lo pierdan. Los cristianos deben aspirar a vivir libre de reguetas, pero no libre de ser testados ni de la compitió fría. Los hermanos de Ken, Marco y George nunca fueron a la Coach Jackson y dijeron: "Hola, Coach, estas cinco personas encima de mí y no me dejan ganar." Porque la Coach Jackson habría dicho: "Te estamos pagando 30 millones de dólares a año para ganar con cinco tipos encima de ti." Por lo tanto, debemos aceptar el test y la competición al mismo tiempo. Así que aquí está una de mis citas de la semana pasada que sale de un texto bíblico. Aquí está, chicos, y es por eso que estamos haciendo esta reunión de la iglesia esta noche. Las personas que más se quejaron rezaron menos. Se quejarse es una indicación de nuestros reguetas irresolvidas que nos harán enfermos debido a una relación no saludable, autofocada, no cross-focused con Dios, nuestro Padre, que está impulsada por miedo y no por amor. Ahora, por favor, consideren esto. Un regreso no es necesariamente pecador. Pero podría ser otro indicador de una relación oscura caracterizada por la falta de oración bíblica con Dios, nuestro Padre, que nos lleva a una elección pobre o inferior mientras actuamos de desesperación, dependiendo de nosotros mismos o de la sabiduría humana y no de la sabiduría de Dios, nuestro Padre, encontrada exclusivamente en Jesús Cristo. El diccionario occidental refina el regreso como tristeza, tristeza, angustia, guerra. El regreso significa estrés de la mente. La tristeza implica un sentimiento de pérdida o un sentimiento de culpa y remorza, decepcionado por algo que ha ocurrido o ha sido hecho, especialmente una pérdida o falla de oportunidad. Así que aquí es lo que queremos que sepan. Los reguetes obstaculizan nuestra libertad y nuestro progreso hacia la tierra prometida y experimentando las bendiciones y beneficios de nuestro Padre, incluyendo el leche y el leche. Él quiere donarnos. Ahora, esta es una de las cosas que queremos que hagamos mientras aspiramos a experimentar una vida libre de reguetas. Debemos tomar un momento regular diario para la vida en nuestro proceso de santificación y tomar la prescripción precisa de nuestro Padre con sus dos ingredientes principales sin compromiso: la cruz y Cristo juntos. Para que nuestro agua se convierta en un condensado dulce, frío y refrescante. No solo para nosotros beber, sino también para ofrecerlo a otros con integridad. Finalmente, escuchen de nuevo cuidadosamente una parte de Matthew Henry's conciso y útil comentario de esta cita que acabo de leer para ustedes esta noche. Esto es profundo. Si no escuchan nada más, escuchen a Matthew Henry, quien vivió en los años 1700. Aquí está. "Dios puede hacer que nos enferme lo que nos prometimos más de nosotros mismos y a menudo lo hace. Así que en la selva de este mundo, incluso los verdaderos creyentes, en la temporada de un juicio preciso, nos tentará temer, distrustir y murmurar. Pero en cada juicio deberíamos dar nuestro cuidado al Señor y sacar un grito ante él." Ahora, mirad esta perspectiva. Moisés hizo lo que el pueblo había olvidado hacer. Lloró al Señor. Elevo radicalmente. Y Dios, Dios mismo, lo proporcionó gratificadamente para ellos. Dirigió a Moisés a un árbol. ¡Guau! No tiene sentido. A un árbol, a un árbol. ¿Y qué pasó? ¿Y qué pasó? Que lo echó en las aguas cuando ya estaban hechos dulces. Así que hace este árbol típico de la cruz de Cristo con dulzura las aguas de inflexión a todos los fieles y les permite rezo en tribulación. Esta es una cita profunda. "Pero un israelite rebelde, un cristiano rebelde no será mejor que un egipcio rebelde." Dios es el gran médico. Si nos mantemos bien, es Él quien nos mantiene. Si nos mantemos bien, es Él quien nos recupera. Él es nuestra vida y la longitud de nuestros días. No olvidemos que nos mantuvimos destruidos y entregados a nuestros enemigos para ser servidores del Señor. En Ilam tenían buena agua y suficiente agua, suficiente de ella. Aunque Dios por el tiempo ordenó a su pueblo para combatir las aguas de Mara eso no siempre será el caso. Déjeme animarte esta noche. No nos olvidemos de la tribulación. Alguien dijo: "Joe Mahari, Dios envía una revivencia accidental a aquellos de nosotros que se niegan a vivir sin ella." Que aquellos que se niegan a vivir sin la revivencia sean nosotros. ¡Somos nosotros! Quiero estar allí. Quiero negarme a vivir sin la revivencia. Porque estamos comprometidos. Un compromiso nuevo esta noche. Para vivir una vida libre de reguetas. ¡Aleluya! Amén. Ahora voy a pedir a nuestro pueblo en el panel a venir. Pido a Chuck Martin a unirnos también porque Jan Romano no puede hacerlo. Así que necesitamos una mesa más, Papito. Necesitamos una mesa más. Amén. Así que pido a nuestro presidente del board, Chuck Martin, a venir. Así que solo tome un asiento y vamos a tener a Kathy en el medio porque ella es la rosa. Estoy entre los árboles aquí. Amén. Así que usted va a estar justo aquí, Kathy, sí. Sí, usted podría estar justo aquí. Papito está en la casa, ¡aleluya! Papito está en la casa. Y tenemos a Pastor Dan. Y Ran está en camino. Ran está en camino. Así que... Abraham está recogiendo a él ahora en el aeropuerto. No, no. Hey, por cierto, ¿ven esta noche que Neftali vio un milagro? Él pudo ser parte del milagro. Me dio la pulpa o el podium casi a la mitad de 97. Ese fue el milagro. Así que gracias, Padre, por eso. Amén. Así que tenemos a seis personas en este panel. Y lo que le pido es que solo se presenten en 30 segundos y luego den aproximadamente una minuta. Así que ese es nuestro panel menos... menos... menos Jan. Y sí, pero él está llegando. Pero él está llegando. Así que el resto de ellos están allí. Así que mantén esa foto, esa foto ahí. Pastor Dan puede tener que estar cerca de las ocho de la noche, pero vamos a hacer lo mejor posible para disparar a las ocho de la noche. Incluso si usted vive en el medio del ejercicio, está bien. Usted tiene que estar con su hijo y respeto a eso. Así que van a compartir 30 segundos de quiénes son y luego una minuta sobre cómo ven los reguetes. Y luego solo para empezar a impulsaros un poco sobre cómo vamos a discutir esto esta noche. No tengo idea de lo que va a pasar esta noche. Pero queremos que participen preguntando y luego van a responder ellos por nosotros. Y la idea es, al final de la noche, es que podremos tomar un control de nuestros propios reguetes. Y luego vamos a hacer un poco de ejercicio. Voy a darles un trozo de papel, un lápiz y luego pueden escribir lo que ven los reguetes. Ah, no vamos a leer eso. Y usted va a llegar a la cruz. Y bueno, vale, gracias. Sí, vale. Vale, estoy tan molesto por eso. Vale, pero necesitamos eso en unos minutos. Sí, ponlo ahí. Sí, vale. Así que la idea es que vivamos aquí esta noche libres de reguetas. Amén. Así que vamos a comenzar con nuestro presidente del board, Chuck Martin. Amén.
Bueno, ya que tengo unos cinco minutos para prepararme.
Siempre estás preparado, Chuck. Fueron born preparados.
Mi nombre es Chuck Martin. He sido miembro del board del ministerio por aproximadamente cuatro años. Y ha sido una gran bendición servir. Ha sido una gran bendición participar en este ministerio RTO durante ese mismo tiempo. Y es un placer conocer a todos ustedes y estar con ustedes en la presencia del Señor cada jueves por la noche. Y estoy emocionado de ser parte de esto. ¿Qué otra cosa?
¿Cómo están sus reguetas? O si usted quiere hacer una declaración de una minuta sobre qué son los reguetes para usted. Solo para empezar a impulsaros.
¿Reguetes espirituales?
Cualquier regreso. Este es un encuentro gratis.
Bueno, es... Lo tomaré como providencia de Dios que estoy aquí ahora. Pero creo que Dios ha estado revelando más para mí sobre cómo se ve el regreso espiritual. Y significa lo que Él quiere de mí, lo que Él quiere en mi relación con Él y cómo se ve eso, cómo se juega eso en mi vida diaria y qué cosas han venido antes de Él en lugar de hacer cosas por Él primero. Así que supongo que para mí es... He estado creciendo y entendiendo más qué no regresar en las cosas espirituales. En el tiempo que Dios me ha dado, ¿qué me quiere hacer? ¿Dónde puedo servir? ¿Cómo me puede usar? ¿Cómo puedo ser parte del propósito del Sucre aquí? Y no solo eso, sino simplemente el tiempo con Él, usted sabe, estar caminando con Él, vivir en el espíritu como Paul habla. Y estoy creciendo en el deseo de no querer regresar a eso, no querer regresar un día en perseguir eso.
Mi nombre es Dan Lindquist y he conocido a Manny durante muchos años. Fuimos a la escuela juntos, a Wheaton College juntos. Y es un amigo querido y soy amigo de RTO. Y mi esposa Micah está sentada justo allí. Raise your hand, Micah. Así que trabajo en la industria de servicios financieros, vivo en Wheaton y tengo bastante tiempo. Así que fue gracioso porque recibí un correo de Manny sobre, hey, usted sabe, ¿quería estar en la reunión de la ciudad? Y no recuerdo... recuerdo hacer una pregunta sobre ello y luego evidentemente estaba seguro en la reunión de la ciudad porque luego recibí una solicitud de Jim para enviar mi foto. Así que aquí estoy. Es solo la forma en que Manny trabaja y es lo mejor. Así que unos pensamientos sobre el regreso que deberían... La forma en que pensé en la pregunta es unos pensamientos que me ayudarían a evitar el regreso en 2018. Así que algunos versos, primero. Uno sería un verso que tal vez sea un top 5 versos para mí en mi vida. Es 1 Críticos 5:16-18. Y lo amo porque responde una pregunta muy importante para mí, incluso cuando se trata del regreso. Responde la pregunta, ¿cuál es la voluntad de Dios para mi vida? ¿Cuál es la voluntad de Dios para mi vida en 2018, la próxima semana? Y los versos son realmente tres comandos muy simples. Rezo siempre, rezar sin parar y dar gracias en todas las circunstancias. Porque esta es la voluntad de Dios para usted en Cristo Jesús. Y así que rezar sin parar y rezar por la alegría y rezar por la gratitud en mi vida en 2018, si hago eso, eso ayudará en mi lucha contra los reguetes. Así que la segunda cosa, Psaño 86:11, parte B, es una oración para mí mismo. Es un verso que he become más familiar últimamente. La segunda parte de él dice: "Unite mi corazón para temer su nombre." Unite mi corazón para temer su nombre. Y mi problema es es que tan a menudo tengo un corazón que se distrae. Así que, Señor, déjame un corazón sincero.
¿Cuál era el resto?
Psaño 86:11. 11B. Que sea sincero, Señor, que mi corazón sea sincero. Que me libre de cualquier hipocresía y distracción. Paul habla de eso en Romanos 7 donde dice: "Dame un corazón puro que ya no está dividido." Y luego hay un montón de otras cosas que mucho más prácticas, tal vez podamos hablar de eso más tarde, que estos versos jugarían en mi vida en una base diaria. Usted sabe, usando su cerebro, solo usando su cerebro para crear fuentes para que no caiga en el regreso o la vergüenza. Y hay muchas formas prácticas para un hombre, para un empresario, para hacer eso. Así que podemos entrar en eso probablemente más tarde. He usado mi minuto.
Gracias, Dan. Sí, con un cuello. Así que si empiezo a malestar, mis disculpas. Mi nombre es Harold Smith y he estado asistiendo a RTO por y sin por los últimos casi cinco años ahora. Y ha bendecido a mi alma. Es tan emocionante poder venir y adorar juntos, escuchar la palabra de Dios juntos y rezo juntos la salvación ganada por nuestro Señor Jesús Cristo. Y Chris, quiero agradecerle por esa maravillosa demostración visual del evangelio de Dios. Tomar lo oscuro, traer luz a él y por gratis. Me recuerda a nuestro Salvador. Así que en cuanto al regreso. Mi trabajo es como periodista y así que periodicamente realizamos historias investigando cómo los estadounidenses se sienten sobre x, y z. Y hace varios años realizamos una historia sobre estadounidenses y reguetas. Fue realizada por Lifeway, que es una organización cristiana. Y, interesantemente, y tal vez no sorprendente, un poco menos del 50% de todos los estadounidenses dicen que viven con el peso de un regreso. Pero lo que fue interesante de esa encuesta es que más de 50% de aquellos que afirman conocer a Cristo dicen que son desactivados, debilitados por el regreso. Y recuerdo leer esa historia y darme cuenta de que el regreso era una cualidad que me estaba deteniendo. Y a diferencia de Paul, que buscaba olvidar lo que estaba detrás para presionar hacia el objetivo, el premio en Cristo Jesús, me di cuenta de que estaba permitiendo que el regreso me detuviera. Un escritor lo dice de esta manera: "Para aquellos de nosotros que viven con el regreso es como conducir en tráfico usando solo su espejo de atrás. Está mirando a través del espejo de atrás y ve todo lo que está detrás de usted, todo lo pasado, pero no ve nada delante hasta que golpea la carretera delante de usted y se detiene muerto y no puede moverse." Y me sorprende eso y quiero, como el apóstol Paul dice en Filipenses 3, olvidar lo que está detrás. Y antes, en versos 10 y 11, nos dice cómo hacer eso. Y cuando pienso en 2018, desesperadamente quiero seguir el consejo dirigido por el Espíritu Santo de Paul. Quiero conocer a Cristo. Quiero saber el poder de su resurrección. Quiero fielidad en el compartir su sufrimiento. Y me doy cuenta de que en todas esas tres áreas me llama a rezar y a estar en su palabra y a fielidad con su pueblo para que juntos pueda ser recordado de Dios que es, que envió a su Hijo, que me ama con un amor eterno y que está en control. Puedo confiar en Él.
Oh, en realidad... Usaremos esta. Así que soy Kathy Woods y he conocido a Manny y Barbara por aproximadamente 25 años. Así que ha sido un placer conocerlos. Durante los últimos cinco o seis años he trabajado en la Iglesia de Cristo de Oakbrook. Empecé con la comunidad más cutija de niños pequeños en la infancia y recientemente ahora tengo que trabajar con adultos. Y no puedes decirles qué hacer, como puedes decir a un niño de tres años. Así que ha sido una transición muy diferente, una transición interesante, supongo. Pero en cuanto a los reguetes, estaba texting a Manny. Tengo dificultades para distinguir el regreso de el pecado porque siento que todos mis reguetes han sido pecadores y principalmente porque es muy autofocado lo que quiero hacer. Creo que desearía haber pasado más tiempo con mi padre y ¿por qué no? Porque quería quedarme en casa y hacer lo que quería hacer. Usted sabe, así que son todos autofocados en lugar de cross-focused. Y cuando pienso en... Mi matrimonio está en gran turbulencia. Cuando miro hacia atrás a aquellos, pienso, oh, fui rebelde, tenía idolatria. Estaba más preocupado por la reputación, lo que otros pensaban, en lugar de la vida real. Fui egoísta, orgullosa, temerosa. Así que esos todos alimentan algunos de los reguetes que tengo. Pero también estoy aprendiendo como las cosas tangibles, como si murmurara sobre algo eso probablemente signifique que tengo un regreso o que estoy preocupado por algo que tengo que lidiar con Dios. Así que ese murmuramiento, ese sentimiento de estrés, como que estás confundido, no sabes qué está pasando. Así que un poco de autoconciencia de cómo estoy respirando porque estoy ansioso por algo, ¿por qué estoy ansioso? something, why am I anxious? Because I'm afraid what other people will think, or those kind of things. That those kind of trigger me to go to God in prayer, and really wrestle it out with him, and be forgiven. And then obviously, when we're forgiven, we can be regret-free.
Thanks, Kathy. My name is Dan Weggerson. I am here for, I think this is my third year, Manny, at the invitation of John Romano, who's a member of my church. And I've, through John, have gotten to meet all of you, and some of you pray at my church on Wednesday mornings. So I'm here as someone who's experienced regret, both personally and pastorally. So there's an old phrase that is used of my vocation, and that is, "The cure of souls." Have you heard of that? Where people come to their pastor with wounds, and we are able to offer the cure of souls, who really is Jesus. So I've heard a lot of stories of regret, but I've been also gone through them myself. And one of the, I was struck by something Dr. Lutzer from Moody Church once said, and he said, "Preoccupation with what we lack is the devil's territory." And I realized that I had been preoccupied with something I lacked, because of some inaction or action I was guilty of earlier in my life, and I would just hone in on that. And I realized, I'm a victim of the accuser, that you all might have heard of him in Revelation 12, the devil accuses the brethren. He accuses us day and night. But the gospel there is, he's been hurled down, and that we oppose him with the blood of the Lamb, and with the word of his testimony. So there's great hope for those of us who have opened the door to the devil, but I'm really interested in engaging with you on the devilish part of this. Because I think if you ever choose to take the handle of regret, you're taking hold of a viper, in my opinion. Because the devil will pile on, and he will love that you're regretting, because he wants to keep accusing you. If there's been sin involved in that regret, and you've already confessed it, how many times, how many of you have confessed that same sin more than once? And how many times did you need to confess it? Once. So back to Pepito's thing with Paul, hey, we've got to move on. We've got to move on, but the devil doesn't want that. So I'd love to talk with you about some more of that, and how the devil has actually taken me down in that area. Thanks.
Wow, I wish I would've got here on time. I gotta come behind these well-seasoned vets. I don't know how I would do that. I don't know why I'm up here. I'm a student, it seems like there's years of experience up here. But I'm grateful to be here. I am a Master of Divinity student at Moody Bible Institute. And, wait, somebody responded to that. You got a Moody? Okay, Moody, Moody in the house? Okay, all right, all right, all right. And so what's funny about that is, is regrets. Me going to prison for eight and a half years brought about a lot of things and turmoil in my life around the people around me. But within the sin that I committed, God was able to use that for his will and purpose to be done going forward, because my regret brought about repentance. And it can bring about two ways. Judas had regret, and he hung himself. Peter had regret, and he repented. And it's a difference about how you respond to that regret, and how you move forward. Because the devil is busy, and if you submit to the devil, then out of that regret will come more sin. If you submit to Christ, and convicted in your regret, then repentance, and yes, you may have to pay for it. I had to pay for the time that I did, but while I was in prison, I was freed. And out of that is where, is when I surrendered to Christ, is where he brought me to where he is now. And yes, divorce came in prison, my father died in prison, and I have to live with those things for the rest of my life. But in the same term, I leave that to Christ, and I allow that to pull me back. And what I look for is the mark that everybody was referring to in Paul, about looking forward, and not allowing my past regrets to hold me down. So the thing is, Christ, I was looking at, one of my favorite chapters is Psalms 139. And he says that, what'd he say? I'm sorry. He says, "For thou hast possessed my reins, and thou hast covered me in my mother's womb; my substance was not hid from thee, which I was made in secret, curiously wrought in the lowest parts of earth. Thy eyes did see my substance, yet being unperfect." Wait a minute, he already knew. He knew before we knew what we were going to do, is how, what he was able to use out of what we did. You know, I look at, one of the books in the Bible I was reading was Esther. And in Esther, they were, there's some of the people had went back to Jerusalem with Ezra, and some remained. And they were parts of Jerusalem that had remained in Persia. And what happened was, they did and commit, if you read Esther, they did and broke a lot of laws. She married somebody that was not Israelite, Hebrew. They ate things that were not of the culture of Hebrews. But yet, within all of that stuff that was happening, God was able to use things for his purpose and his will, even though they weren't doing what they were supposed to do. So I believe that even though we are people, human, and make mistakes, God's still in control. He's omnipotent and omniscient, and omnipresent, and in that, he can be, his will and his purpose will be fulfilled and be done.
All right. So now you know who they are.
Sir.
And we're going to welcome your questions or your comments. And we're going to keep it short from both sides, so we will have, you know, time to respond. So if you want to ask questions, just lined up by Nesta Lee, and you can direct her to either one, or to all of them. I'm just here to facilitate. So who is the first courageous person that wants to make a comment, or have a question about regrets? Or a confession? This is a friendly, pretendless, family-free meeting. We are taking a radical timeout. Anybody that wants to come up and give a brief comment, or ask a question? We have Joe Mahari, I believe, he is coming to the microphone. We have another courageous person, we have David Chambers. So we have two, so if you want to be behind them, just lined up. Okay, so we have Joe, come on.
Does the panel think that if the Lord God Jehovah, the Lord Jesus Christ, forgives you for something, that you should forgive yourself? Otherwise, you are actually violating the relationship and the forgiveness?
Anybody who wants to?
I would say absolutely. I hear others saying absolutely too. Joe, thank you for asking that, because it's actually very prideful of me to think, my sin is so, so great, so unique, that, you know, God could forgive me, but I can't forgive myself. It's actually my pride that steps in the way there. So I agree with you.
I actually believe that if you don't forgive yourself, then you actually haven't allowed God for him to, allow him to let you forgive him, you forgive him, him to forgive you. If you surrender to God and ask God for forgiveness, and he comes into your heart, and you actually receive him, then you allow him and what that work to do, to wash over you, so that you can forgive yourself. And now, actually, if you can't move past that, then actually, you haven't actually received the forgiveness that he has offered us. That's, I mean, that's what I believe biblically.
Anybody else?
I guess I would just add that it's even offensive, that it would be received as offensive to Christ, because he did die for all of those sins, and so by us, it's pride, and it hurts God that we wouldn't live in that freedom that he's offering.
Yeah, I would, amen all that the panelist said, and I think in a sense, you're saying that the cross was worthless. And I also would say, and again, I refer to the apostle Paul in Philippians 3, I think it is why he begins his litany by saying, "I want to know Christ." Because I think he realizes that it's only by knowing Christ, and knowing him more, and more, and more, that you are overwhelmed by the reality of what the cross is all about, and what he's done for you. And I think in that knowledge comes a deeper and deeper trust and confidence of a work completed.
Anybody else?
I would agree with everything that was said, I just would add one thing to it, and that is, I think if you find yourself not receiving God's forgiveness, or having a hard time, really, I agree with your point. We need to receive it, we need to trust God's word, that it's true, that Christ came for our sins, but that if you're not, that's from the enemy. I mean, it is, it is direct from the enemy. And if we're not receiving that forgiveness, we need to be on our knees, praying the armor of God, you know, the helmet of salvation, the breastplate of righteousness, the shield of faith. I mean, those are, that's our response to when we're not receiving that forgiveness. It is not from God.
Can I just, I know exactly what Joe asked, and that was a powerful and a good beginning from you guys to the panelists. I want to make sure that, and I think that we got what you said, Joe, but I want to make sure that we use the right language. I believe what Joe asked was, that we would not receive the forgiveness. I want to make sure that we understand that we don't have the power to forgive ourselves. We don't have the power to forgive ourselves, because, you know, we didn't die for ourselves. Only Christ died for us, and therefore, we cannot forgive ourselves, but we received the perfect and permanent sacrifice, that was bloody, every drop of the blood counted, to cover my sin, to impugn my sin, to impugn me, and for me to, double imputation, right? I imputed my sins to Christ, and he imputed his righteousness to us. So I want to make sure that we understood the question and the answers correctly, because I want us to speak the right language, so we will not confuse ourselves, nor confuse others, in what we truly believe, that we must receive that forgiveness, big time, big time, but that we don't have the power to forgive ourselves. Are we okay with that? Are we okay with that, Joe? Amen. Okay, Steve?
Well, I'm just looking around, I'm going to be the guy, the outspoken guy. A room full of brothers and sisters in here. Apparently, we're the only one with a regret. So get out of your comfort zone, step up. Mine is actually a confession, and there could be comments as well after this. But I surrendered my life when I was 50, and I'm 57. Although I was brought up in the church, I knew right and wrong. Have four boys, and my regrets have been, and I've asked God to forgive me for those things in my life. But if I get into my thinking, into my humanness, I can go south real fast. My regrets are, why didn't I surrender to you, God, way earlier? I could have been so much more useful for you than when I was 50, you know? And that's a regret. And I love my wonderful wife, going on 38 years of marriage, but I had her do things, and I knew they were wrong, before accepting Christ. And those are regrets. And I've apologized and asked forgiveness from her since then. But those are regrets I've had, you know, we have four boys, what would have looked different maybe in their life if I would have been where I am, where God has me now, when they were young? Because I have all adult children, 31, you know, 33, you know, 28 and 24. So that's my transparency, my confession. I'm in a really good place, but I gotta not go there.
Thank you, Steve. Steve, can I ask you a question? Have you confessed that sin of those wasted years? Have you repented of that to God?
Absolutely.
You've been forgiven.
I understand. What I'm saying is, I know I am.
Yep.
But if I get in my thinking.
Yep.
And I can go south real fast.
Sure.
So I have to be focused, not get my eyes off of Jesus.
Amen.
And moving forward. But I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Those were regrets.
Can I phrase this statement as a question? Maybe that will make it easier for a response. How do you panelists keep focused on Jesus when you have regrets that recur often?
I stay active and in the Word. The Bible says, we fight not against flesh and blood, but the spirits of piety. So that's the spirit that we are, that is fighting against us, that wants to remind us of, not necessarily who we were, but who Satan sees us as being currently. And he wants us to believe that lie, as opposed to believing the truth that Christ is, who he says he is, in us. And any man that is in Christ weeds of what? New creation, right? Old things are passed away, and behold, things become new. So although we are the same, you are the same 57-year-old man, but you're not the same 57-year-old man. You know, you are a new creation, right? So I often think about, what would have happened if I would not have went to prison? Would my father have died? Did he die of a broken heart? What would have happened? Would I have gotten a divorce? What would have changed if I would have gotten away with my sin, as opposed to? And sometimes we can get in that phase. But again, those are spirits, and what we do actively is stay, I stay in the Word. I stay on my knees, I stay praying and fasting. And these things help, and they help very well, because we cannot fight the devil on our own. We don't have that power, right? We don't have that power. And we have to submit and surrender to Christ wholeheartedly, all the time, 24/7 battle, to fight these demons and these battles, this battle. And we have to understand, though, we definitely have to understand that the victory is already won. And if we believe that, then we start believing the lies that the devil is trying to sell us.
Yeah. I would only add in, I'm pained by your confession, and I think many of us have mourned the past. But one of the things we see over and over again in Scripture is that our God is in the reclamation business. And there is nothing that he will not use to bring himself honor and glory. And I have to believe, brother, that even in the midst of your heartache, one of perhaps your prayers needs to be, "Lord, in light of those regrets, what have you shown me? What will you continue to show me, in light of those regrets, that I can serve you with in the days ahead?" One of the interesting things, I was reading through some of the later interviews with Billy Graham, and we've run a number of them. And of course, now he's 99, and he can't carry on interviews. But near the end of his, some of his last interviews, he focused on regrets, and yet shared how God had used those regrets, most specifically, his regret that he was not with his family as they were growing up. A deep heartache for Billy. A deep heartache for Billy. And yet God has used that in Billy's life in his later years, as he counseled young evangelists and helped pray over them and direct them as they sought to bring God's Word out, and at the same time, were uniquely called as a husband and as a father. In essence, God reclaimed that regret and helped Billy direct that regret in a way that ultimately gave honor and glory to God. So that's my prayer for you, brother. That God will build off of that in ways that only God, only God can build.
Well, I will tell you that what I went through broke me to the point of surrendering to the devil. And I would leave jail for this today. I'm going to go home.
Yep. Awesome.
And I would just add too, just to have a heart of gratitude, that he held on to you all those years, and that he did turn you and bring you to surrender. And that always brings me back.
Use that time. Thank you, Steve. They kind of stole my thunder. I was gonna respond to your request. Thank you for your transparency. And I think in my own situation, I don't have kids, but I look back on regrets too. But you can use that time. I'm just so thankful that you identify it, that you know, it may be eight years, but these are eight precious years, and don't waste a minute of it. And you can use that past in the past. Thank you for the chance to talk. I regret that I have no regrets. I knew that was gonna be the topic today. I was thinking, what is it that I regret? And I do have several, but the ones I could share, I think, are more disappointments. I want to back off something that Pastor Dan had said, and this reminded me of what I was thinking today. I regret that I don't spend more chair time with the Lord. I try and find things that are inspirational, I have things that I want to read, but I let other things creep in. The thing that I was thinking of my way down here is, shame on me, that I've not written more of our partners in prison. I intend to. I cut out things that I want to send. I have to find out what the rules are to send them, but do I do it? No. I jump at the chance, and we fill out a Christmas card, because it's already done for me. I don't take the time to do it. So I'm disappointed in myself. What Pastor Dan said was perfect. I wrote down notes on this. We're preoccupied with something we lack, and that's the devil's playground. And so I want to kick myself. I was thinking today, I was gonna get up and write a letter to Tim Pelz this morning. Did I do it? No. I had a phone call. I baked. I helped a neighbor. I realized the weather's changing. I jumped in the car, and I thought, ah, that note and the pen are sitting on my counter. I'm gonna do it tonight. So don't regret it, but I do, I have a disappointment. But that's one thing I have to turn over to the Lord and say, "Forgive me, Father. The intention is there, but the discipline to do it is just lacking."
Thank you, David.
Well, let me give you guys a question to easily respond to that. When you end your day and you realize you haven't done something you intended to do, what helps you refocus?
Well, one thing that a day is, is 24 hours.
And one thing that serving time has allowed me to do is put time in perspective. And I use every minute and moment that I can to make sure my time is, I'm a good steward of that time, and he gets the first fruits of that time. And what I didn't do in that day, I can't turn back time. What I do is make sure that next day is done more and better than the day previous. And see, that's the thing regret, or when you look over your life or where you are, should be able to do, if you have that time or you're able, to move forward in a different manner than you did previously, once you're convicted, or you understand what you did not do, where you weren't, and where you were.
I would just, where did David go? Oh, okay. I would just say that I'm not good with the word discipline. It's not my favorite word. So I would, I like to turn it around and say, well, you know, I missed something that I could have been with God to do. And if I, like Manny says, God is delicious. He is the one that satisfies, like, so you just remember how awesome he is, that you want to be with him, so kind of get it off yourself, but like, oh, I missed this opportunity to be with this awesome God. And that kind of turns it around for me.
Okay, thank you for your service to the body. I think we've touched on it a little bit, but could you speak to the idea that it's easier to form regrets for things that you don't do than things, than sins that you do commit? Is that, am I unusual in that? I find it easier to forgive myself for things I do rather than things I neglect to do?
That is interesting, isn't it? I was reading a book by Dave Ferguson on this topic. Dr. Smith, do you know of this book? Am I calling you doctor correctly? In the book, they uncovered some research that says, in the short term, we tend to regret action, and in the longer term, over a longer period of time, we regret inaction, things that we didn't do. And then, for some of us, our regrets involve a reaction to something that was done to us. You know, maybe neglect, or, you know, illness, or an accident, or something. But I think, you know, my own personal regrets tend to be more over things longer in the past, and that's more inaction. This is my experience.
I'm with you. I think that, I haven't thought about it like that, but I think inaction is where I have most of my regrets. It's things that I've not done that I know I should have done. You know, one area would be, one area would be in the area of empathy. Empathy, I can even go back to when I was in high school, you know, and you see people that you know are hurting, you know they're hurting, and you're too, yeah, your heart's too distracted to have empathy, to put yourself in someone else's shoes and come alongside them and love them. And so I can think of many times in high school where I blew it because of inaction. So that's insightful, and Pastor Dan's comments are insightful. I don't think about that very often, but I do have misgivings for things like that. I wouldn't be the one that would be the bully, pushing kids around, or that's just not so much, but it's more inaction. So that's insightful. You know, people have kind of batted this around a little bit tonight, the same concept, but I, when I think of regret in that way, or regret in other ways, I think of a quote from John Piper. I don't actually remember the quote, but he talks about, "There is, there is well-placed regret." There is, he would say, well-placed shame. And I think shame and regret in many ways are the same things. And that is, that's because, because when we dishonor God, that's well-placed regret. You know, there is a real place for being sorry, for anguishing over our sin. But you know what? When that lingers too long, even the areas of inaction, when that starts to linger and control us, as many have cited here tonight, then it becomes what John Piper would call misplaced shame. And that's where, that's where it lingers a little bit too long, and then that starts to become destructive, and even you can get to the point of despondency in your life. And so maybe some people here are struggling with misplaced shame. And this is a longer answer, I'm sorry. So the, you know, we don't, we're believers. Those that are believers, we don't live in this age of karma, where, you know, you kind of get what you deserve, what goes around comes around. We live in this age of grace. And grace, you know, takes karma and squashes it like a grape. And that's just really good news. And so I would hope and pray that for myself, and for my family, for my wife, my kids, and for everyone here, that we wouldn't live crippled lives because of sins from the past.
Just to be short, James 4:14, "Whereas we know not what shall we be for tomorrow; for what is life, it is vapor." And then it goes on to say, "Therefore to him that knoweth to do good and does not, it is sin." So it's just as sinful for, you know, people to do things that they know they're not supposed to do, but for us as Christians, for not to do something, and we know we're supposed to do it, it's just as, it's just as bad. So what we want to do is be aware, be conscious, and be active.
Yeah, and I would only just, I'm sorry. Yeah, I really resonate with that. And I would just say this, sometimes I think our guilt over inactivity is based more on our type A-ness, in terms of our wanting to seemingly do absolutely everything. And at the end of the day, we think, oh my gosh, I didn't do this, I didn't do this, I didn't do this. Who's driving that judging? Are you, or is the Spirit of God? And I think we need to be proactive when it comes to our activity for the kingdom. I think we need to pray aggressively in the morning, that over the course of the day, God would open our eyes and hearts to what he wants us to do, not tomorrow, but today. Then, if the Spirit clearly says, "Do this," and I avoid that, I will be reminded of that by the end of the day. I will have to confess that. But I think one of Satan's great tools is to guilt us to death, because somehow God's kingdom hangs on us alone. Let me give you the word, that's not the case. It's his kingdom, and we have been called into it to serve the King. So we have to, as my father would say, every morning, get our marching orders and pay attention to where the Spirit is leading.
And I would just add, I think sins of commission have a label. You know, you lie, you cheat, or you commit adultery, whereas sins of omission, we don't quite have a label. But I was watching an interview about racism, and they gave the label of Christian quietism, that we have not spoken up, that we have not loved our brother by speaking. But by giving it that label, then I realized, oh my goodness, I've been, I have done that. I have been such, so it was a great thing of conviction for me. So I think if we can kind of give sins of omission a label, that helps us address it to be forgiven and move forward.
Okay. One final question here. We need to know, okay, Scotty?
All right, this is, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. My name's Scott, 27 years old, and I guess, it's not a regret, but, you know, I was stuck in a stronghold of drugs and alcohol for about the last, let's see, I was 14 when I started using. I'm 27 years old now, and, you know, I think there's a lot of people that underestimate the power of the Holy Spirit. I've been completely delivered from addiction to drugs, alcohol, cigarettes. You know, it's amazing what can happen when you fully submit to God, you know? And so I think there's a lot of people out there who struggle with the definition of joy. Artificial joy, I believe, is a big problem in our society. Can you guys speak a little bit about that? What's your definition of joy? You know, I mean, because for me, it's not going out to the bar, you know what I mean? I kind of liked what you had said about the tattoo, you know, thing and everything like that. There's a lot of people out there, and I like to keep it on an I statement, but for the sake of tonight, I just think there's a lot of people out there who have the wrong idea of what joy is, you know? And I gotta speak a little bit about joy.
I would say it's a calm satisfaction in knowing God, no matter how life is going.
And I would also add to that, that it's knowing that you are beloved of God, and that in itself just fills us with joy, because it's so contrasting to what the world tells us, and that no one can take away. But God loves us to pieces, and that is joy.
And I would say that no matter how corrupt the world is, how chaotic it is, God is still on his throne, and I am his.
Take a slightly different twist on your question, Scott. When you were talking about how the world is pursuing joy, I guess we're looking for joy, trying to receive, joy is probably not the right word of what the world is trying to pursue. I think, you know, we all have a God-sized hole in our souls, and only God can fill it. And when God fills it, we experience his joy under the definition that you just said. And what God's been showing me is that there's a lot of things that are idols, a lot, a lot of things. And if I fill myself, if I think that, whatever, whether it's a job, a house, a car, a relationship, you know, name the thing. If I pursue that to fill that hole, it's going to fail me. It may provide temporary satisfaction, but it will always fail me. If we fill it with the God size, if we fill, if we let God fill that hole in us by pursuing Him, by staying in His Word, through prayer, and just wanting to be with Him, I, there's no better place to live, no better place to be. And that's, to me, is what true joy, and that's kind of the, God's sort of been screaming to me in that, that just, I want to scream to the world, you're never gonna get there. You will never get there without the Lord.
I totally agree. I just want to say that I think God has definitely given me somewhat of a mission. Well, it's not somewhat, it's a mission, you know? I think there's a lot of people out there who are struggling with that idea, that this is gonna be them for the rest of their life, and this is not true. That's another lie the devil tells us, you know, is this is who you were gonna be, this is who you are, so you were meant to be, and this is the lie, you know what I mean? So kind of what you were speaking on a little bit, you know, being 57 years old, there's a lot of other guys out there who are 57 years old, who are, you can set people free as well, you know what I mean? Age is just a number, you know? So thanks.
Yeah. You know, I would just say this, I won't add anything else to the panelists, other than to say that, how does that manifest itself in a testimony like Chris's tonight? That's how it manifests itself. When you see it, when you see it, it's distinctive, and thank you for that.
And Scott, I want to thank you for mentioning how strong the Holy Spirit is, that that is huge. I think there's a lot of people that are confessing, they say they're Christians, but have they really truly received the Holy Spirit? And that's a great, so thanks for bringing that out.
You're allowed enough. I don't know how to use this thing. Anyways, my name's Mike, I'm 62 years old. I just want to say thank you to Manny and Barbara, Joe, and everybody. I'll be moving away, so I'll be out of the community for, pretty much for the rest of the time. So I do want to thank everybody. I just have a problem with asking God to forgive you, and I keep asking Him, but I can't forgive myself. I've lost my faith. I scared my kids away from me. I scared my ex-wife away from me. I put a gun to my head, and I pulled the trigger, and here I am. Do I find faith in God, or do I blame Him for me standing here? I blamed Him for me standing here. I've lost my faith in that reality. This is wrong, and I should thank God for letting me be here to tell you all of this. Kind of a testimony. You know, they put me in prison for it, but you know what? Shame on them, you know, because it was wrong. But I wanted to thank everybody as I move away from the community, to thank you all for hearing me out. But I still don't have faith, and I do not ask God time and time again, forgive me for what I did, when I can't find that faith again. That's a hard thing for me, because I don't have that faith no more. But I did want to say thank you to all of you.
That needs a response, Manny, we can't just move on.
That's, 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 that, uh, what that was is honest. That was real. And he very bluntly just said he has no faith, and he blames God. So what do we, as the Body of Christ, do about that, as one who sits in the midst of us in that position? We need to pray. That's the purpose of us and this community. When we come together in fellowship, we build each other up. But when people come in, and they are looking, searching, finding, wanting, then him being in the midst of us, he should get what he was looking for. So would you, I don't know, I'm not running the show. Yeah, would you want to come up here, so we can pray, with all the body of Christ standing? Dear Father, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, who shed His blood on a cross, for the sins of the world, we come before You humbly, boldly before the throne of grace and saying thank You. Thank You for this young man, this young man who sits here crying, seeking, wanting, searching for answers, knowing that Christ is the answer. There is yokes that needs to be broken, we asking you break it. There is chains that need to be broken, we asking you break it. There is sins that sit here before You, we ask that you forgive Him for His sins. We asking that the Body of Christ, all in the believers, we come together humbly asking You thank You. Thank You in forgiving us for our sins, for the things that we've done and we have not known that we've done. Thank You for what You're doing, and what You're going to do for us in our lives, that we're able to come together in this fellowship, to lay hands on this man, to pray for this man, to help him to seek what he is searching for. But we know it is Your faith that seeks out ones that are of the Body of Christ, that You seek, and that You find the ones that are His. And we asking that right now, you come and cover His heart, His mind, give Him the vision to seek You, give Him the earnest desire to seek Your will in His life. And for that, we say thank You. We thank You, we praying for this family right now. This family that turned its back on Him for the things that He's done, that we know that there is nothing impossible for You, that all things are possible. And we ask that You bring His family back to Him. We ask that You bring this man to his knees and give him what he is looking for. And we ask all those things in mighty name of Jesus Christ. In Jesus' name, our Lord and Savior, amen.
I'm thankful for Steve, because he's been coming here for many, many months, and we have been praying for him, and we will keep praying for you. Oh, Michael, thank you, Michael. And we are here to pray radically, to Lord radically. Amen? Amen. And you have a chance tonight to put all of your regrets on that box, that we're gonna do in a couple of minutes here. Okay, thank you. I thought that Dr. Peter had a question.
He thought this would be a good spot to stop, so he'll ask later. It is eight o'clock.
I really would like to...
Manny let him, he wanted, he insisted.
Well, okay, let Joe say one more thing, and then we're gonna... Are you sure, Dr. Peter? Okay. Okay, go ahead, Joe.
In listening to everyone this evening, one of the things that came through very loudly to me was what the Lord has said. "I will give you back the years that the locusts have taken." Each and every person here has a unique relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ, and we are very fortunate for that, and that He knows everything, but He demands our honesty. He already knows, and so for us to be totally honest with Him, we will walk forward in His name. And the other thing is, the chairman of the board said something very important early on. He says, "I come here all the time, and the Holy Spirit is here." Now, that is a very, very, very important statement, a statement of truth. We don't have to ask for the Holy Spirit to be here. The Holy Spirit is the triune God. He is here, and He honors those who seek Him, and He gives us more. So I will tell you one thing, just to really mess things up tonight in finishing. I want to have a lot of regrets, because I want to see a revival. And it starts with my honesty. It doesn't start with my palaver, it doesn't start with my ability to rationalize, it starts with my honesty. And when we talk about omission, we humans are extremely good at omission. We compromise and do things all the time that do not honor our Lord God Jehovah. And so, I am going to be starting with more regrets. Why? Because I want revival. And where two or three are gathered in My name, they're in the midst. So He's waiting for us. He wants the best for us, and He will take care of everybody who has those things that have happened in their life, but they face Him honestly. And He will give them back the years that the locusts have taken. I have never seen the righteous forsaken, nor His seed begging bread. That deals with, hey, Joe, you screwed up, you did this, you did that, you did 20, you did whatever. But you are no longer an orphan, you belong to Me. So He will give us back the years that the locusts have taken. And I come here, for the last several months, this has been a joy. I want to hear the Word, I get anxious to hear the Word. And when I get the Word, boy, does it move me, and move me forward. That's what we are about as a group.
Thank you, Joe. Well, could we give a hand to the Lord for this panelist? Amen? Could we bring the cross back? Could you help me bring that cross back there? Just don't carry it, just push it. Just push it like a car. Yeah, push, yeah. So I get what Joe just said about more regrets, you know. However, some of us have regrets that is hindering us from moving forward. So if you, if you are led to, if you are led to, write them down. Could we put the portable cross here? Right. Okay, I'll get there. So, we're gonna give you quickly a piece of paper. So could we get a couple of volunteers to help us, a couple of volunteers to help us, and the pencils as well. We're gonna take a couple of minutes to write down our regrets. And you don't have to put your name on it, you can do it in Spanish, in English, in French, in German, whatever language you want to. And then you're gonna come to the cross, and we're gonna put them at the cross on the backs that says regrets. And then we're gonna pray for those regrets. And we're gonna leave here as quicky, thank you, Neff, and we're gonna leave here as quicky clean tonight. Amen? So let's do that, please. And I want to thank again all of you for being here. There are a lot of people sick tonight that could not be here tonight. Joy even came being sick. I heard that Linnea Martin is sick, and many other people are sick. But some of you are here tonight and are not sick, so don't get sick. Amen? So we're gonna write down our regrets. Amen? And write down my regrets too. Before, as you write them, Dr. Peter, I'm really interested if you will come here and share your questions, or your comments with us, because very few of us, very few of us have had the experiences that Dr. Peter Brice have had. He's been in more than 100 countries. He has engaged in Buddhism, engaged in Islam, engaged in a bunch of other religions, and he's a newly believer, only four years. And he said, "I, doctor," he said, "a blessing to many of us, including to me, and to Barbara, and to my own kids." So will you come here, Dr. Peter? I hate to put you on the spot, but we just cannot leave here without listening to you, because you were in line, and you're a very kind man, you're a very gracious man, and you didn't want to take time, but I believe that we have to take the time.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
That's very kind of you, Manny. I apologize to the panel. A little hard for me to hear sometimes with the resonance in the room. But the problem that I have is not being able to receive the joy of forgiveness because of the fear I have of God. I look at Moses, God knew what Moses was going to do, yet He was going to kill Moses. After what Moses did in the desert for years with his people, He did not allow Moses to enter the promised land. So there is a true fear, and I have a blockage of the joy that I think I should have because of this great fear of God. How can I get rid of that fear? I know we've discussed many things here already, but it is such a strong fear of God, and knowing what He has done, and what He's capable of doing, to alleviate my fear.
Who feels qualified from the panel to come here and answer that question? How about Kathy Woods? "I was surprised that we had no ladies in the line. They were all men." Just a comment.
Well, I feel like I'm an excerpt, but I feel like I maybe have been in a similar place. And my image of God was, He was a very harsh God, so there was a fear of Him. And it's even in the song Amazing Grace, which was fear that brought my heart to Him, and fear that grace relieved. So I think there is an, I would challenge you to look in God, look at Jesus in the Gospels, and see who really, who your God really is. So many times, we have an image of God that isn't accurate. It isn't what is truly who God is. So God is Jesus, so if we look in the Gospels, that's who our God is.
I accept who Jesus was and what He did for us, but I also learn and read about what God has done, and the fear that He also has the wrath of God that's there. I understand what Jesus did, but I still have this blockage with fear, seeing Him, what He did to certain people, seemingly great people, for what the things they were going to do or didn't do.
Well, Manny addresses a lot the wrath of God, but because of Jesus, He took all that, and so you're trying to reconcile kind of the God of the Old Testament and Jesus?
Yes.
Thank you. You were very helpful. How about, you want to give a shout to that, Papito? Papito? Papito is very qualified also. You know, there's a fear of God, that we fear God, but there's a fear of God where we fear God because we want to obey God.
First of all, it's a powerful question, because I too can relate to that. I've wrestled with that reality. Several things that I would simply say, first of all, and I know the portion of Scripture you're referring to, and one of the things we have to do is take the whole counsel of God, which is not identify God with one slice, but the whole counsel, all 66 books, and how He manifests Himself. Obviously, we see Him incarnate in Christ, and grace abounds. What's interesting about the God of the Old Testament, who is in fact the God of the New Testament, is there is a bounding grace in the Old Testament. And that's one of the ways in which I've navigated the fear of God. For example, in Genesis 6, 6, 7, and 8, it's really interesting two verses there. The first two verses, basically, it says, in fact, the translation, and in the NIV, uses the word regret twice. "God regretted creating man." And then that verse 7 ends again, "He was grief-stricken in essence, and regretted making man." So, and He was going to eradicate creation, which of course He did in the flood. But interestingly enough, is verse 8. "But, but Noah found favor in the eyes of the Lord." And what that verse is all about is grace, salvation, and the plan that God set into motion, beginning in Genesis 3 in the garden, when Adam and Eve fell. A grace that would eventually bring Himself incarnate in Jesus Christ, to walk on earth, to die on the cross, and to declare that it is only by His name that you and I can be saved. So, do we fear God? Yes, we do, absolutely. Does God have amazing grace? Absolutely. Has He made that grace known to you and to me? Absolutely. So, you know, if I'm going to just kind of do my sin thing, I have to remember that there is a God who I need to fear. And God does get angry. Jesus got angry. All you need to do is go to Matthew 23, when He disses the Pharisees, and that's a savage chapter. Or you go to Revelation, and you see what the Son of Man does in the last of days. But there is grace upon grace, as Paul says. And I think that is what the Scriptures, again and again, from Genesis through Revelation, speak to those of us, that the Spirit is drawn to His name. So that's how I have sought to deal with the reality of that God, who seems to be a God of vengeance, but I have to step away and say, "Lord, your whole counsel, what does your whole word, what does everything in your word tell me about God?" It says grace, 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 grace.
Need to help you a little bit?
Thank you. One last comment, and then we're gonna come to the cross.
Just wanna... Hello? I just want to feed into where the young man here was talking about. I just want to feed into where the young man here was talking about faith, you know? I was lost here one time too, I didn't have no faith in nothing, nobody, or anything, because I didn't believe, I didn't believe in God. I just want to share my, my little thoughts with you. But you know, I found faith because I was a drug addict, and I was a gang member, and I'm retired prisoner, and I prayed, and I prayed, and I prayed. Today I thank God that I'm sober, I'm away from drugs, and I got so much faith in God that I have been dead more than once, but today I'm alive. And, you know, He works in mysterious ways. He works for me, so He's gonna work for you. I just wanted to share that. And at the same token, thank everybody. God bless you all.
Could we put it on the box, and I'm gonna pray, we're gonna give it to Nestalie, we're gonna have ice cream, and we're gonna have fellowship. Amen? Hallelujah. If you have a regret that you want to take to the Lord, come to the, come to the cross. Hallelujah! Thank you, Papito. Thank you, Papi. Thank you, Father. We're gonna pray, don't leave yet, we're gonna pray. And put the pencils there, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Dan Link, West. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tim. We miss Sue tonight. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Tyler. Okay, anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna pray. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Dara? You have two, good for you. One for Ronnie, one for you. Yes. Okay, thank you, Ruth. Okay, anybody else? Okay, guys, we're gonna pray. Could we stop for a moment, stop talking, and could we gonna pray? Okay. Could we have silence for, for a couple of minutes? Hello? Silencio por favor. Silencio por favor. Let's stop. You see, now, we're gonna come before the God that we fear, because He's a holy God. It's a holy, holy, holy God, and therefore, we stop. We stop because we want to be in His presence right now, and nothing else matters. But we are going before His presence right now in the name of Jesus, in the power of the Spirit of God, and we're gonna come with faith. Faith in who? In Me? You better not have faith in you, but faith in Christ, who said, "It is finished," who made the payment already in full for my past sins, my present sins, and my future sins. And therefore, we come with confidence and anticipation that these regrets that you're putting in here, they've been paid for already, and therefore, we're going to receive the forgiveness. We're going to receive the grace and live by grace. Amen? So Father, we thank you tonight for this great panel that we have before us. We thank you, God, for the questions that we heard, for the comments that we heard. We had also, Father, many challenges. And Father, tonight has been a night filled with testimony, filled with grace, filled with Your Word, as we fuel this meeting tonight from the book of Exodus, 15, verses 22 through 27. So Father, we want to see the exit tonight. We want to go out Your door. We want to take Your exit, and not our exit. We don't want to hit our head on the wall anymore. We want to go out Your exit. We don't want to take 40 years in the wilderness, we want to do the 11 days as You intended, Father God. So I pray for my friend from RTO, that we will be able to take a radical time out right now as we put these regrets on this box. And Father, we pray that You will give us freedom tonight from regret, that We will give us free from bondage, and that we will be able to have a year free from regrets. So Father, as we go home now, as we have fellowship, as we, as we enjoy ice cream tonight, as we, as we, as we love each other, Father God, I pray that You will be glorifying us tonight as we continue to be satisfying You. And Father, I pray that tonight, You're gonna give us fresh joy. Scotty talked about joy. Father, give us a joy that is unspeakable, give us a peace that is unfathom, give us a love, Father God, as Dan Link, we talked about empathy tonight, Father God, that is gonna be compelling, because Father, You're gonna help us love our neighbors as we pray. So thank you, God, even for this stand, and the initiative of Ron tonight, Father God, as we spend time, Father, praying, God. And thank you, God, for Mike, who was honest enough to come up with his pain and his regrets, and his, and how he views, Father, himself. But Father, thank you even for the last testimony that we had, that Father, speak to the fact that You are God, You are Father, that can change anybody. So we pray for my God, that He will be transformed tonight as we already pray. So Father, we pray tonight that You will give us freedom in Christ like we have never seen before, because You are holy and we not, and we coming to You in Jesus' name, and God's people say, amen. Hallelujah! Nestalie? Okay, Nestalie's coming. Thank you, Chaplain Marianne, for being here. Hallelujah.